Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms has the lobby room cleared.
Yes.
Thanks, Chief. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I'm pleased to welcome the June 26, 2024 Action Meeting, and the time is 6:01 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind everyone, the members of the public, of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Pursuant to Board Policy 0164.1, Board Member Langford Fleming will be participating by phone and voting this evening. Member Langford Fleming, are you on the line? Okay, I guess keep me updated when she is, if she is. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to approval of this evening's agenda, which includes a moment of silence, the Pledge of Allegiance, recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include three items under Board Office, five items under Executive Services, seventeen items under Academic Services, six items under Business Services, four items under Human Resources, three items under Information Systems, fourteen items under Operations, one item under Public Hearing, and four items under the Good of the Order. Board members, is a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
We have a second?
A second, thank you.
Okay, moved by Ms. Jordan, and seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Please record your vote. I hate that.
I know. Try again.
Just to confirm, Ms. Langford Fleming is not on? Okay, motion carries, six zero. As is the custom of the Board, Ms. Patrico will lead us in a moment of silence, after which Ms. Morgan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this moment, please stand.
Please bow your heads in a moment of private reflection or prayer.
Ms. Morgan?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, at this moment, we're going to move on to recognition, so Board members, please join me in the pit for recognition.
The Pineapple Report is a news information source for K-12 education, honoring those making positive contributions to education. This is the second year for the Excellence in Education Awards, spotlighting winners for leadership, school safety, academic achievement, community faith engagement, fiscal management, innovation, and corporate partnership. A selection committee comprised of statewide education leaders and leaders from the public and corporate sector, as well as school board members, administrators, superintendents, educators, and union leaders, voted to present and honor the recipient with this recognition. The recipient accepted the honor in the Tampa Bay during the 2024 School Boards Association and the Florida School, I'm sorry, Florida Association of District School Superintendents' Annual Joint Summer Conference. The school board and superintendent are very pleased to recognize David Nuland, District Executive Director of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management, as the Pineapple Report's 2024 Excellence in Education Award recipient for school safety.
Board Certification is a voluntary program for lawyers officiated by the Florida Supreme Court and administered by the Florida Bar. The program began in 1982 to help the public select lawyers who are distinguished in particular areas of law. The Florida Bar thoroughly evaluates all board-certified lawyers for credibility and expertise in a particular area of law and professionalism ethics in the practice of law. The slogan is "Evaluated for professionalism, tested for expertise." Established by the Florida Supreme Court, Board Certification is conferred upon lawyers by the most credible and highest authority of the state's legal community, the Florida Bar. Board Certification is Florida's official independent determination of a lawyer's expertise to practice in a specialty field of law. It is the gold standard for Florida lawyers, representing recognition by a lawyer's peers that they have attained a level of professional expertise in their chosen fields. Board-certified lawyers have dedicated themselves to achieving a heightened level of excellence through character, professionalism, ethics, and credibility in the practice of law. Requirements include that lawyers must practice law for at least five years in the area of law in which certification is sought. They must pass a comprehensive examination that evaluates a high level of knowledge, skills, and expertise in a specialty field. Board-certified lawyers undergo a rigorous peer review process that assesses competence in a special field, as well as professionalism ethics in the practice of law. According to the Florida Bar, out of the over 100,000-plus attorneys in the state of Florida, only 5,000 hold the board certification in one of the 27 specialty areas, which is approximately 7%. As of June 2024, 47 out of those 5,000 will be board-certified education law, with approximately 15 working for a school district. The school board and the superintendent are proud to recognize our school board attorney and general counsel, Attorney Kathy DePree Bruno, for her success and ongoing dedication to the highest standards of excellence in achieving her board certification education law. Congratulations.
At this point, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent or board attorney may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further personal attacks, such as name-calling, are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum allotted time for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are three individuals that would like to speak to the Board this evening. The time per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Please ensure you have completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff located to the right of the dais. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board but did not fill out a public comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm seeing none. At this point, Attorney DePree, Attorney DePree Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you very much. Will the following individuals please line up? Madeline, Dr. Madeline Stewart, Joshua Krakow, and Dr. Paula Porter.
Good evening, Board. Madeline Stewart, I wanted to talk again about the policy on personal property that you'll be voting on tonight. I know that it said that this is just a technical issue, but I think, and there are many who agree with me, that this is really an inappropriate policy for teachers. What it seems to do, on the face of it, when you read the policy, is to restrict the autonomy of qualified professionals who need to make decisions constantly about how to best meet the learning needs of the students. They do this not with maybe months ahead of planning, so they can fill out forms, but they have to do it maybe the night before, maybe the day before, whenever. We are restricting our students, our teachers' creativity. We are under, we have a huge teacher deficit, and we don't, this is the kind of policy that says, "We don't respect you as a professional. We think you need to be treated in such a way that you have to fill out a form because we can't trust that you're going to be bringing in appropriate curriculum materials for students." And I think this sends a terrible, terrible message to teachers, and also to teachers who aren't in our district yet but may be considering coming here. So I hope that you will, at some later point, actually reexamine that policy. Thank you.
Can you please turn off?
Just make sure we have ringers turned off.
Cell phone, thank you.
My name's Joshua Krakow. Two weeks ago, I just went...
One second, Mr. Krakow.
We just want to make sure that the time is on. Can you please add two minutes, two seconds, four seconds, five seconds to the timer? Thank you.
Reset it, please.
Reset.
Hi, my name is Joshua Krakow. I just went to the Governor's Summit for Family Cafe up in Orlando, and I was introduced to the adaptive books that they make where they take these small books, children's books, and they supersize them, so that way the whole classroom can see them, and they make them interactive. So that way, you can pass out, for example, this one has a duck, and it's Velcro, so you can pass these out to the individual children to keep the children engaged, introduce It will help with the kids with dyslexia. One in 10 kids right now have dyslexia. One in 36 kids have autism. A lot of our kids have social issues. I think that we really need to work on getting more adaptive things like this that are more inclusive and way more cost-effective than giving, my daughter's going into kindergarten next year, she doesn't need a tablet. It's crazy that our, that our school boards spending all this expenses on tablets. I was just talking to a parent the other day that I think we all know and highly respect, and she was telling me how she withdrew her child from our public schools, and when she withdrew her child from the school, there was no request of, "Oh, this Chromebook." So months went by, and they went to clean out the backpack, and they found the Chromebook, and as a good citizen, they returned it. But there was no audit of, "Hey, you're withdrawing? Hey, we need the property back." So I'm curious how much of that money is getting thrown away and costing taxpayers. And then I was also informed about a archery program that utilizes the same bows, arrows, safety equipment. It is all for free that we can do through the archery, or National Archery School Program. They provide all this stuff. All the equipment is parallel from elementary to high school. There's competitions all the way up. It can introduce scholarship programs. It can do, introduce Olympic opportunities, and it gets our kids more active. So I please hope that you guys consider those opportunities, and we can provide better services to our kids.
Dr. Paula Porter, Lehigh Acres. Concerning Policy 3281, the implications when teachers are prohibited from using external resources to enhance the understanding of the curriculum and from providing essential tools for learning and normally provided in the classroom, is deeply impactful on both the educational outcomes for students and the teaching environment. Without access to materials that are often not supplied by the district, there is diminished student engagement and creativity, as well as limiting students' ability to demonstrate understanding in diverse ways. Restricting the use of external resources can impair the development of critical thinking and research skills essential for academic success. Students coming from lower socioeconomic opportunities will be disproportionately affected by such prohibitions. We all know that teachers out of their own pockets will provide these students materials to help with their learning development. What about projects that involve materials from home or community resources that foster connection with the community and students? External resources allow teachers to tailor lessons to the diverse needs and interests of the students. Prohibition of these one-size-fits-all approach to learning ignores education research that points out that personalized learning enhances student achievement. Finally, by further demeaning teachers, indicating that they don't know what is best for their learners, leads to lower teacher morale and professional autonomy. Again, this will depend on the process developed by administrative staff, but by restricting a teacher's ability to create engaging lessons can only bring about increased teacher turnover. It seems we are forgetting that teachers are professionals. Let me repeat that. Our teachers are educated professionals in their chosen field and have a thorough understanding of pedagogy. Last, I ask you, how can the district vision of being a world-class school system be possible with this policy? Let me remind you of the Board's philosophy of articulating the rights and abilities of all students to learn that establish a foundation for which all teachers work together and teach all students. An inclusive approach to education considers that general education environment as a preferred option for all students. By limiting what is brought into the classroom, how is it possible to meet the Board's own philosophy for our district?
Mr. Chairman, we have one more individual, Justin Ward.
Please proceed when you're ready.
Hello, my name's Justin. I'm a teacher at Riverdale High School. I teach biology, and it's about the form that's put forward for teachers to fill out of what we're going to bring into the classroom. As was spoken before, sometimes you have to change plans on the fly, right? The night before something happens, maybe you have to change something. So if that's the case, if you have to bring something in, are we allowed to bring it in without that form and fill out a form at that time? Or if there's something pops up, are we just supposed to wait for some sort of approval, however that form goes? There's a lot of issues with that. It does take away from creativity. Say if, sometimes I'll do some research at night, try to find different projects if we're trying to do something, and say, "Okay, maybe I'll do this one tomorrow, and I'll do this little activity today, so I'm going to bring in some supplies from home." What's to stop me from doing that? Why, this form is going to stop me from being able to do that, right? Because I need to have everything around that I bring to the classroom. So there's a lot of issues with this form, and I think it does need another round of talking about, maybe hammering stuff out. And as far as the form, it does say that the district is going to supply the teachers with everything they need for the classroom. As it stands, I've been asking for different things from my classroom at Riverdale, and they told me there's no funding for it, or there's not enough money for it. So how can it be guaranteed that things that we might need to bring in from home last minute or anything like that, how do we know that the district's actually going to be able to supply that? And not only that, but in a timely manner, too. So say if I wanted to do a lab in three weeks, and I have to get all those supplies sorted out, how's the district going to approve that or say that I, again, just, there's a whole bunch of situations where teachers on the fly are going to have to change their plans, change their opinions. And with this form, too, have you, did you guys actually go and talk to the actual teachers, the people that are going to be filling out the forms, the people that are actually going to be responsible for this? Because I promise you, especially that first preschool week, every teacher's undergoing so much stuff, setting up the classroom, setting up lesson plans, getting things ready, and we worked on that throughout the whole summer. So just to add another form that we got to fill out, get permission. We are adults. We have college degrees in our specific fields, and I don't mean this in any disrespect because you're all remarkable people. You guys have your education. But we as teachers, we have a degree. To be a school board member, it's not a requirement to have a degree, and that's not a slight at any of you guys because you guys are well-accomplished, but we do have some knowledge, some insight into our own subjects we're trying to teach, our own, just our own classroom, there's a flow to it. And it just seems like every time, every week, every month, there's something that keeps getting added on, added on, add on more red tape that's really handcuffing teachers and making us, we can't actually do our job properly right now. I know that I'm not alone when I speak for other teachers about this. Just, we have so much we have to worry about. Between what we can talk about in class without getting fired, I know that some changes got to put on that, we are so restricted, so we don't need more restrictions. So I just ask you guys, don't vote yes on this tonight, take some more time to talk about it, or just get rid of the form completely, because we already have enough. We are teachers, we are adults. We should be trusted, be able to be bringing stuff that we think would be suited for our classroom, and we already have policies in place to make it so they have to, we can't bring anything, or the things we bring in have to be related to the curriculum. So why do we need this extra step?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That concludes public comment. Sorry, my mic was not on. Dr. Savage, or Attorney DePree Bruno, is there anything you wish to address in regards to public comment?
I'll first defer to the board attorney if she wants to address the technical aspect of the policy mentioned, and then I'll handle the substantive side.
So just, just to be clear, this policy has been in existence since June of 2023. The language with regards to the form has been there the entire time. The only change to the policy is to add a statutory reference, and that's why it's just a technical change. But I know that Dr. Savage is going to address some additional things with regards to the policy.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Board Attorney. I just wanted to make sure I address that we'll certainly have some staff review and try to surface some of the specific challenges with the form. That's just something we need a little bit more time to dig into and see, are these some of the things that have been brought up today? Look at those aspects of it and try to give some more feedback so we can at least allow the Board to have some more information as you consider, as we mentioned earlier during the briefing, potential consideration of any review for that. We want to surface all those issues that were captured, as well as any others, and if we have any recommendations as well at that time, we would bring that forward to the Board. Though today was not a substantive revision, it was really more of a technical revision, so we just want to qualify that for the folks who came and spoke, as well as for the board members who are seeking to potentially vote on the technical revisions today.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We truly appreciate it. Thank you to our teachers out there. At this point, we're going to move on to approval of action items under the consent agenda. This documentation for action items listed under consent agenda is made available to Board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the Board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? We'll start with you, Ms. Juvenelli.
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Patrico?
J1, please.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
I have none.
Mr. Persons?
I have none.
Do we have Ms. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
G5 and J2, please.
Okay, and I have none, so we're going to be looking at J1, G5, and J2. So at this... So at this moment, is there a motion approved tonight's consent action items with the exception of the pulled items? Mr. Persons?
I move we approve the consent items with the exception of J1, J2, and G5.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Jordan, please record your vote. Ms. Langford Fleming, how do you vote?
Chair Fisher, I was able to vote electronically.
Okay, thank you. We have a count? Motion passes 7-0. Before we go to Dr. Savage, just want to make aware to any personnel in the audience, we are still going through motions before we get to any of that point in regards to personnel. So just wanted to make that clear. Dr. Savage, please, we have three items to pull. Please read your recommendation for the next pulled item, which would be G5.
Yes, Chairman. Item G5, the approval of the employment contracts with Assistant School Board Attorneys Robert Dotig, Corey Huffman, and Coris McIntosh. The agreement for Robert Dotig has a term of one year, July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025. The agreements for Corey Huffman and Coris McIntosh have a term of one year, June 26, 2024, through June 30, 2025. Approval also authorizes the additional $13,000 plus the increase to benefits, FRS, and Social Security.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation? And I know also, before we do that, actually, let me take that back. Do we want a, Board Attorney suggested perhaps we do a motion to divide on this?
We received, we received notice today that this item was going to be pulled and a motion made with regards to the contracts for Attorney Corey Huffman and Coris McIntosh. So I would advise Board Member Morgan to do a motion to divide so that we separate Mr. Dotig and Mr. Huffman and Mr. McIntosh's contract. This motion will require a second, but does not require debate. And as it's an administrative motion, there will not be public comment.
Ms. Morgan, what's your pleasure?
So I move that we divide the contracts for Corey Huffman and Coris McIntosh. Separate those from Robert Dotig and that we treat the contract for Robert Dotig separately from those for Corey Huffman and Coris McIntosh.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Jordan at this point. Do we have any discussion?
There is no discussion. This is a motion to divide.
You're right. My apologies. This will be a roll call vote at this point, so when everyone is ready. Ms. Juvenelli, how do you vote?
I vote no. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Persons?
No.
Okay. Ms. Langford Fleming?
No, please.
Okay. And Ms. Morgan?
Yes, please.
Okay. And I am a no.
Motion fails.
Is there another motion?
Mr. Persons?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation, G5, as Superintendent read it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Persons and seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Okay. Do we have any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, I will be voting no. And the reason I'm voting no, so that the public understands, I'd like to read my comment. In choosing to proceed with the Evergreen contract, the board acknowledged salary amendments to close compensation gaps district-wide would be needed to restore equity and fairness in compensation internally and externally, excluding, including compensation for district administrators. It was also made clear that closing salary gaps might require funding in excess of the board's ability to allocate in one budget year. Hence, an administrative recommendation would be made for a multi-year schedule to fairly inequitably close pay gaps across the district, including the administrator class. Legal department, assistant board attorneys are subject to the same employment conditions as administrators. As part of the administrative cadre, they received 8% salary increases in 2024. The district ABA employee current compensation is within the range of what is appropriate for that employee class. And so for that reason, I don't believe that they should be treated differently than the other administrators. I think it sends a message that we are not all part of the same team and we are not all receiving the same accommodations with respect to our employment conditions. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Board member comments, questions? Ms. Juvenelli?
I don't have any questions. My concern is that this request was made back several months ago, and we know that they're being underpaid, but I don't think we hold this up any longer because we have a really good team working and functioning effectively as a legal team. And I, they're feeling devalued, and I do not want to attribute to that. I want to make sure that they, to show that they are valued. And I think we have to be careful because we can't pick and choose who gets raises. And that's happened with prior administration, very recently, actually. And there was, was a lateral move. It was, there was no promotion, and they got quite of an increase, and this board did nothing about it, and they let it go through. So I think that we should be allowing this small raise really go through and try to treat them fairly and equitably. Thank you.
Anyone else before I? Ms. Jordan?
I would just, I know that everybody wants to feel valued, and I absolutely value all their work. And when we're speaking about devalued, a lot of our people in the district feel that way because of the funding. And so how do we set a precedence? But the Evergreen study was supposed to come to us. That was the purpose of doing this Evergreen study, was to make sure that we had the information needed to true up and to make sure that everybody was receiving their adjust. We've yet to see that. I don't have any idea where it's at. I mean, I know we have a, our HR, our HR person is here. I don't know if she has some insight on, you know, what that looks like and if this is even in that. And if it is, then so be it, then we do that. But where is that information that we have not received? Because that would be to the superintendent.
Ms. Juvenelli, followed by Ms. Patrica?
I, too, am concerned over the Evergreen study because we paid a lot of money to have it expedited within six months to have the information, and I don't even believe they, they did that. And I'm hearing the information is, a part of it, it's a problem. So we paid like extra money to have it in a timely, timely way, and we did not, and that's not happened. But I don't believe that was not under this administration. And so I am concerned, but I think we have to keep moving forward. And if we don't do this now, I mean, I think we're going to have to probably give them more money anyways, based on the Evergreen study. This will make them happy, and, and I think the team will function appropriately and effectively. And this is what this will do.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. So for me, it's a matter of making a decision in a vacuum. Like, I don't have, I have the information, the Evergreen study for the attorneys, but I don't have it for every other class of employees in the district. And so I don't know whether this is the raise that, that is appropriate for every category of employee. So I, you know, I, I want, Mr. McIntosh, Attorney McIntosh, you're sitting at the table. I want you to, I want you to know you are valued, and I want to give you the money that you absolutely deserve for the position that you have. However, I can't look at you and ignore that. And I would, I feel like a yes vote tonight would be doing that. It would be saying, okay, these three employees are getting what they're due, but the other $13,000, we're not taking care of them. So that's, I just want you to understand where I'm at, and, and I think you know how much I appreciate you, and you know how much I enjoy working with you. And I'm, I'm sorry I have to say no, it's not personal. It's in this position, I've got to look out for the big picture. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica, Ms. Morgan, then Mr. Persons?
Yeah, I just want to add that these, these increases will come if they're entitled to them as a result of the compensation study. It's not like we're saying, no, you can't have the increase. We're saying, no, you can get the increase at the same time that everybody else in the district who's entitled to close, to compensation to close their gap will get it. So that, it's, it's not a no. Just want that understood. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
I agree with Ms. Juvenelli. We have so many legal cases going on at this time that I know we have millions of dollars, and we need to keep our team together. And I'm afraid that we might lose the team, and this is such an insignificant amount of money to keep the team together that I am going to go for this. And again, we, when it comes out, we'll look at it and maybe, you know, go from there for all the other departments. Because I believe there are some that are definitely underpaid and we need to step up. So I will be supporting this.
Okay. Ms. Jordan, then I want to double check if Ms. Langford Fleming has any comments.
Do you want to go to her first?
Yes, actually. Ms. Langford Fleming, is there anything you wish to add to this?
Sure, I agree with Mr. Persons and Ms. Juvenelli on this. A study is exactly that, is just a study. It's a recommendation or a suggestion on, on, on what we are close to. I feel like our legal department has done their fair share, and Mr. Persons made a great point that we have so many things going on in the legal department. I believe that they have stepped up and deserve this, so I will be in support of this as well. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I just want to make sure that when we're saying, and yes, we've had legal issues, and everybody's doing a great job, and the team is, is an awesome team that we would want to keep forever. We also want to keep our teachers. We also want to keep our principals. We want to keep the people that we have that are teaching our children and doing all that. So we, we are the ones who said that we're going to do this Evergreen study so that way we can true up and make sure that everybody's being paid what they are deserving. So, and like Ms. Morgan said, it's not a no to the funds because everybody deserves what they're worth, everybody. But I think that when we are, we are the ones who said we're going to do this study. We are the ones who said we're going to come back and we're going to try to, you know, get with the budget, figure this out with HR, let's, let's true up where needs, where that needs to be. And we're, again, deviating from what we said we're doing. We're not kicking the can down, but we're saying, again, we're not going to follow what we said we're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else before I give my comments? Ms. Juvenelli?
I actually think making this move tonight just actually reiterates and shows the people and the staff that we're planning on and moving forward, not backwards or not stalling, moving forward to giving everybody a raise per the Evergreen study. I think that this is based on the information that was given to the board attorney regarding that. I think that's really important because I think if we stall this, it only just shows that we could, we could possibly stall the Evergreen study, and we're not doing that at all. In fact, we're trying to move it forward, but there's a lot of information that is, that needs to actually be worked on per the superintendent, and they're, they're going to get it where it's more easier for everybody to understand, and it's not that way at this time. It's very difficult and convoluted. So for me, this is a step forward to show that I plan on making sure that the Evergreen study trues up everyone that that study has been done for, and is sooner than later. And I'm not going to wait. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
I have a question for the superintendent. You chose not to push these through on, as a recommendation of the superintendent. Instead, it was put through as a, this, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's wrong.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Morgan?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
I have a question to either Dr. Savage or Attorney Bree Bruno. What's the approximate fiscal impact of these raises?
So it's approximately $13,000 plus the nominal value of FRS and Social Security.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think we also need to look at this as a board that it's not an either-or proposition. Just because we increase our attorneys doesn't mean we're not going to increase teachers, staff, anything like that. I mean, I think we need to stop looking at it like that. Besides the Evergreen study, I mean, there's been increases outside of the Evergreen study. So I, I truly appreciate our attorneys, probably because from my background, being an attorney, I understand what they have to go through, and it's a lot. And that's not saying we don't appreciate all the teachers, the staff, the principals. Each person has a role in this district. And I mean, more and more with operating a school district this side, we need to make sure we have the best attorneys and make sure we can keep them. So that's why I'll be supportive of this motion. So any other comment before I go to vote?
Okay. This will be, oop, sorry.
Just go ahead. Just because a number of board members made the comment about Evergreen, you actually, I just read yesterday, we, because they've been putting together a comprehensive update on where we're at for the board members and to try to make clarity around that piece. It is, I want to make sure we're measuring expectations. It's a very comprehensive body of work, but we are very committed to, it is a massive undertaking to fix our compensation systems, particularly with administration. Obviously, with all of our different groups, it is massive. And so I will just say, we are working on that, and you will get a very good substantive update this week that it kind of outlines where we're at in that process because we recognize people are waiting and they want to know where we at. I've heard it from every employee group that we talked to, and it's absolutely massive in terms of implications and whatnot. So I just want to validate that certainly this is a front burner, top priority item for us, and we are working through it, but it just, it's going to be very challenging. And we're going to give you all this information, but you're actually getting something this week that summarizes where we are presently with a lot of substantive information from Evergreen as well. I just want to give you that, that that is coming this week for you, the board members.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. And, oh, Ms. Jordan?
May I, through, Dr. Savage? So did every department get the Evergreen study to, to look at and to take apart, to figure out what their people would be getting?
Yeah. It's important to clarify what we're talking about. There was a tool that was made available, essentially an analysis tool that was made available to many, many, many employees among the different groups. Those who chose to complete that, it collected significant information. They did comparable studies. It's get, all this information will be in the update as well that kind of outlines what those pieces are. But it did, it read, it was across all of our groups. We also had our Spalk, I'm sorry, not our Talcott group, our Spalk and Admin Schedule folks, and, and board attorneys were included as well. So it is very far-reaching. There's a lot of data to unpack, but it's also just important that people understand procedurally what that data is, what are its strengths, what are its limitations? Because it is not going to be a simple, here's the easy solution and the quick fix. There's going to be things that will be debated. There's going to be things of how, what's the best way to do it? What's the best timing to do it? Over what period of time to do these things? What's the first priority? It's going to be a very rich conversation that I simply could not do today because I really want you to have that rich information so we can all unpack it and that our employees can unpack and understand it as well. But it is going to be a process.
And just to follow up real quick on that one. So is there any possibility that the Evergreen study coming back would be showing less for the attorneys than what we're given or higher? I mean, is there, could that be a possibility?
Well, I will say that the Evergreen study, what it will provide is information. It'll provide ranges of information, percentiles, based on minimum salary, median salary, maximum salary. So again, that is, doesn't have a simple answer to say, other than to say how we interpret that information, how we look at it, and the way we give weight to it in terms of a beginning person, an experienced person, a median salary, and then what were the comps utilized in that process. It's, it's going to be very defensible, the methodology of how we did it, but there's also going to be limitations. And so that's why I keep trying to measure expectations, that you're going to have information, but if anyone thinks it's going to solve and give them a clean, easy answer to any of those questions, it will not. But it will give you answers within the methodology that they employed. And then that's kind of the discipline I'm trying to have in answering this is, I just don't want us to think that you're going to read it and everyone's going to come away with a, with a pure understanding of this answer. That's why it's just very important to do it because this is a very important conversation in terms of the overall system and so forth.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Superintendent Savage to explain to staff why he thinks it's appropriate to treat one group of people differently than the, the rest of staff.[1792.76] it's appropriate to treat one group of people differently than the rest of staff. I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is it's okay if operations comes and says, "Our people need something," and finance comes to us directly to the board and says, "Our people need something." I mean, I just don't understand from a personnel management point of view, and from the point of view of a board that's trying to indicate to all of its staff that they're all valued, they're all being treated the same, that it's okay for a group that has a reporting relationship through the Board Attorney to get a response, but everybody else has to sit and wait. And we know, in fact, or we don't know, in fact, we suspect that there will not be adequate funds to compensate everybody in the first year. Decisions will need to be made, and those decisions need to be made on the basis of district priorities, board priorities. So, I just like the Superintendent to address staff with respect to his making this recommendation. Thank you.
I think it's a very fair question, to be honest. So, yes, one of the challenges that I have in my role is that I have to balance many, many things, and recognizing that I really understand the complexity of this type of work and the magnitude of the impact and how it's felt in the organization, whether it's teachers, our support staff. The reality is that the way we compensate is truly not a one-size-fits-all for our entire district as it is. We compensate folks in a variety of means, and what the study will ultimately reveal is that there are elements where folks are being paid substantially below their market based on the data that is, and there's people paid above that market value. And we'll have to reconcile some very difficult problems. So, that's why, in my mind, I recognize that, certainly what I would say as a, that's one aspect. What I would also say, though, is as an organization of our size and the scale and the movement that we have through different, there are lots of other aspects that we have to evaluate, not just that piece. Ultimately, what we're going to land with is the very best possible compensation system that has a clear, defensible methodology of how people are paid, how does that associate to those pieces? Those are critical priorities of this project that we want to establish, but those are massive undertakings. And so, in the absence of being at that clear definition of where we will eventually land, which starts with a clear philosophy on how we compensate, and then strategic elevations of exactly then what does that look like in those elements, we're just not close to that point. So, the problem is, do you hold up in the meantime? Anything that you do related to compensation, do you not employ folks? Do you not, what do you do in that, in the absence of it? So, part of the mitigating factor for me, as I analyze this, was the very small amount that it is and the anniversary dates that we have in these particular aspects of it. So, and again, I'm just, you're asking for why, for me, how can I support something to this? Part of the way I assess recommendations that come forward, that come to me eventually, is I assess them, are they reasonable? And I will tell you that having worked directly with our legal department, because again, while you have a Board Attorney, I work with the General Counsel, I work with all the legal services, the nature of the work that they do involves millions and millions and millions of dollars of potential losses that can then impede our ability to do anything for our employees. And so, I have the utmost respect for the quality of what our team is doing, because every day on the job, what they are doing is demonstrating the economic value that they are creating for us, that this very minimal threshold, minimal, is paying for itself probably within one day of their work. And so, that's something that I would put forward to this board, is just to recognize that every money that we pay out in settlements, and I say this from experience, because the last time I was interim, I had to sign a half a million dollar settlement with an employee that we had mishandled, that had we just done what we should have done through proper guidance and so forth, that was half a million dollars that could have paid for this many, many times over, that could have been set aside for compensation. Every mishandling that we have authorized, those are the kind of things that these folks, with not just the reactive, what they're doing, and I could go on to the work they did today, and the work they are scheduled to do tomorrow, and the impact of those things. But that, the nature of that work, has a direct fiscal impact that is just beyond, you know, explanation here. So, I'm just giving you that as a piece of feedback, that as I analyze a reasonable request and have to prefer which is worth waiting for another six months or an eight months to do. It's beyond, in my mind, absolutely, that this is very reasonable to request, and that's why I have no problem at this point, from my standpoint, putting forth a reasonable recommendation with the caveat that absolutely we are looking at all of our employees, and they are not, we are not bypassing everyone else. It's strictly a very small number of folks and a very small, and an opportunity for us to do that. I hope that answers your question, Ms. Morgan.
Is that all at the moment, Ms. Morgan, or?
Yeah, I was asking him to address staff, but I appreciate his response. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure you're finished, ma'am.
I am.
So, go ahead, Mr. Persons, and then?
I agree. I was going to actually first say everything Dr. Savage just said about how just one settlement saves us a lot of money that can then go into salaries for staff and everything else. Otherwise, we end up having to take it from all the education. The other thing is, our team is now doing a lot more in-house that we were giving to outside counsel. We've taken over that, which, again, more, several times over pays for this $13,000 total. So, just wanted to point that second part out.
Anything else before we proceed to roll call vote? Okay. At this point, this is going to be a roll call vote. Please signify by saying aye or nay when your name is called. Ms. Giavonelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Ms. Langford-Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries five-two. Dr. Savage, please, we're going to move on to recommendation for item, pulled item J1.
Yes, Chairman. Item J1, approval to adopt and revise job descriptions for Academic Services Division, Executive Services and Infrastructure, I'm sorry, Information Services Division.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Patrica, and seconded by Ms. Jordan. Board member comments, questions?
I sent my piece this afternoon.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. Ms. Langford-Fleming, do you have any comments?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay. At this point, if there's no comments or questions, we're going to move on to a roll call vote for this, then. One second. Okay. Again, signify aye or nay when your name is called. Ms. Giavonelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Ms. Langford-Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries four-three. At this point, Dr. Savage, please read your recommendation for pulled item J2.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to board, and the board knows how I feel about so moved, just make sure we restate the motion for the record, because I just want to make sure that we have it.
Okay.
Yes, but I've said in the past, try not to do the so moved, so we can have it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Proceed, Dr. Savage.
Chairman. Item J2, which is the approval of the general personnel recommendations as presented.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion, we approve the job recommendations as presented, J2.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Jordan? Okay, moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Jordan. Please, if there's any discussion, board members, we'll start with Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, legally, I can't not support this, but the fact remains that I do not support the recommendations that the Superintendent is making in this case, and I want that to be a matter of public record. So, that is my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Well, I agree with Ms. Morgan, we really can't say aye or nay, but I have total confidence in the Superintendent, and I would not want to delay this even if we could, because if we delay it now, it would then be, again, next year before we could come back up with this again, because you wouldn't want to do these in the middle of the year.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. And I as well know that I cannot, because of the fact that as transfers, the Superintendent can transfer all day long, because that's in his purview. However, I am opposed on the way the process, not the individuals, but the way that the process happened, where it was not open, because I was absolutely told in our one-on-one that this would be open for people to apply for the positions. So, I just want to make sure that that is out there, and I do understand that I will be approving this.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, Ms. Jordan reminded me that there are a number of personnel recommendations that have been made that are not in compliance with board, with district protocol. Staff did not have opportunities to apply for positions that were not posted, jobs that did not have job descriptions until today. I want staff to understand that, we are aware of that, and some of us have objected to it, but legally, we are prohibited from objecting to a Superintendent's personnel recommendations unless the people are not qualified, and we cannot say that they, I cannot say they are not qualified, I can just say that the process was not followed, and frankly, you don't have confidence going forward that the process will be followed. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Langford-Fleming, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. I mean, I'm just going to be brief, we discussed it before. I am fully in support of this. We are at a place in this district that we absolutely need change, and that we need to make sure we're going the right direction, and this is how we can do it, infect change. This has not been a change, as I said, that's just unique over the past year, two years. This has been a long-term change, and this is something we need to address, because our number one priority is student achievement, and we need to make sure we're doing that. And as I said before, the buck stops with all of us, so we need to make sure we're doing that. And I'm not willing to wait a few months on this. We need to make sure we're doing the best for our kids, for this district, and for these teachers right now. So, I'm going to be supporting this, obvious. Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
I just want to make sure, clarification, because I don't think none of us were against the, what was presented to us by Dr. Cupid McCoy and Dr. Spiro. We all, I believe in our conversation that we had today, we thought that this is a great way of work for the district moving forward. It was just the fact that with myself, it was the fact that I was told that it was going to be open to every, because I said, "Who can apply for these positions?" And I was told, anybody could apply for those positions. It has nothing to do with the people that are in these positions, because I believe in every single one of them that are in there, because I know every single one of them, and I believe in the individuals. I just felt that we have processes, and if we're not going to adhere to our processing, the way we do things with the pools and everything else, why do we have the processes? And that has gotten us into some problems before, because we did not follow processing, our processes, and I know that I was told, Dr. Savage had told me, sometimes they're just there to get in our way, but they're not there to get in our way, they're there for a reason, because we are, they're there. So, I just want to make sure that it is clear that I am not against this, nor do I believe that anyone sitting here, and we made that perfectly clear today, because it just sounded like, when you were speaking, Mr. Fisher, that we were, some of us were against it. I don't think that any of us are against the theory of this. So, thank you for letting me clarify that.
Anybody else? Mind if we have Dr. Savage?
Yeah, just because when the words are, I want to make sure that I'm clarifying the words are said, so there's no doubt, when we first were unveiling this concept, our full intention was, we were originally considering assigning everyone as interim roles for that piece, so they would fill it as an interim. The challenge is, we unpacked the unintended consequences of assigning people as an interim to just make them do it, and then going through the application process, is you would not have completed that even in the summer, and we would have been at a huge, knowing that our student achievement rate has been in such a substantial decline for such a long period of time, and that the challenges are many, that our school principals surfaced, we felt that we needed to make sure we got folks who were in it now and could begin that work of making sure that our principals and the school administrators and all the work that they're responsible for are heard today, that are heard throughout the summer, that that work, the clear results that we really want to do, that all that was happening. So, absolutely, the original intention was to try to get interim folks to fill those roles while we went through that lengthy process, but we looked at it, it really became unwieldy, and that's not to say that's, so I don't want to mischaracterize that we just, the process gets in the way. It doesn't. It just makes, so that by the time we meet again in July, and the time the school starts, you still might not have completed that process. And then, also, what you're doing is having school upheaval, where as people are being, you know, a person applies and gets a job down here, then all of a sudden, their school, right before the start of school, has a change in administration. I gave board members those exact examples of what that looks like, that when one person comes here, then that then opens their school. So, by, even though it seems like a lot, having the laterals where you are able to move those pieces and get them all in place, then what you do is have very few areas left, that you go through that longer advertisement process, the lengthy process of the screening and all that aspect. We still will be doing that. There are, there will be legitimate vacancies that come from this process, and then there will be unplanned vacancies that occur. That would then be all you're filling in July, so the work and the planning that we know we need to put our students first truly is our priority. It has nothing to do with trying to ignore process. This is one of our processes, the administrative process of how we transfer, are we involuntarily transfer. Those are processes, we are not ignoring them. We're strictly utilizing the process that makes the most sense for the work that we need to do, which is data, it's done exclusively for the data, for the opportunity for us to improve the results that we have not been getting, unfortunately. And it pains me to say, it is not personal, absolutely. So, thank you for the opportunity to clarify the words that I said, so that it's there for that piece. Thank you.
Ms. Giavonelli was next.
Well, I actually was going to say something along those lines. This is long overdue, 12 years of long overdue, and it's time to take care of our students, keep our eye back on the prize, our students. And then, once we do that, I assure you that the staff will be in a better place, because right now, they're overworked, they're underpaid, and we know it, and we're going to, we've got to do something about it, and I believe this is a start. But we have to make sure that we're meeting the mark with educating our students, and we are missing it. One of the actual numbers right after COVID was 85% graduation rate. 85% sounds great, but we're 47th in the district, 47th in the district. I'll say that again. So, that really just speaks volumes out of 67. So, that was just an information today.
Mr. Persons?
Quickly, the way this was presented to me on my one-on-one, this will result in a savings of $3 million, okay, and that which we can put back into the classroom. So, I just, no one really mentioned that. And in the corporate world, this is called rightsizing. Every big corporation goes through it. When they have a problem, they reorganize and try to get it right. And so, I think it's a great.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you for bringing that up. I totally forgot about that. So, yes, so $3 million is what we were told. However, what we're not showed is, it looks great when you're taking all the funds away from those positions that equal that. How much, we don't know what Schedule M pays, we don't know, there's not, and I understand Dr. Savage had told me that this is the way we do the budget, but it doesn't show the difference of what is being paid out. So, those numbers that we're seeing are not really the $3 million, because you have to put into consideration what the other pay will be, which will come out of that, because there'll be more payment.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, remember, Jordan, I'm happy to clarify again on this as well. So, what remember, Jordan, is referring to is when we're looking at the reductions and the savings that are generated, what we utilize are the position, in our budgeting approach, we position by the budget. What that does is takes the totality of everyone who serves in that position for the whole district, the lowest paid to the upper paid, and they get an average. That's what creates that unit value, so that what your budgeted savings are will ultimately not necessarily be the exact dollar value that you're listed, because when those folks are no longer on the payroll, and in some of our cases, actually, the unit value that of the person, their actual payroll number is higher than that unit value. So, in some cases, we may realize more savings, in other cases, less. If they're at the brand, if they're a brand-new person, then they're going to be paid typically on the lower end of that. The theory on that piece of how and why utilize those values, because number one, they're based on real averages, and secondarily... And secondarily to that, it's a it's a much more effective way to do it unless you're all cutting brand new people in their positions. In our case, as I showed you, you have folks who are at the very beginning of that particular salary, they're brand new to that level of position, and you have others who are more senior on those positions. So when it's all said and done, it does come out very closely to the numbers that you have. It's just a difference of whether you utilize payroll numbers versus in our case, how we and this is all of these are done utilizing budgeted values. We don't use the payroll numbers when we put when we put forward. We don't use the actual people. We use the positions because those positions could change. A person could theoretically be higher or lower. So it's it's really just more of that process of how that works. But thank you for raising that question.
And I appreciate you clarifying that because in fact, when we look at those numbers, they are not I mean, they are not the exact numbers. So that's what I wanted to make sure that that was understood. Thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming, did you have a comment?
Sure, I'll comment at this time. I could not agree more with Ms. Juvenelli. She's spot on with her timeliness. As a former educator, after speaking with so many people in the district throughout the last year, meaning, you know, the the feet on the grounds, those people that are in the front lines, we cannot wait until semester or even next summer to shuffle the deck around Christmas time would be most definitely devastating to our students who I put out in the forefront of my mind when I'm making these decisions. And to take and these I know that I can't I'm sorry if I can't remember which board member spoke earlier about vacations and vacation time and who's this. After researching on my own and my and and my professional touch or my personal touch with the district, and and it's hard for me to take that out of my decision-making, I have full confidence that the people that have been put in place are going to do the job that has been that they have been tasked with. So I, once again, I'm in full support, but why not be the district that's pioneering something new? I know we have protocols and I respect that. I believe that this board has turned a corner in professionalism, and I hope that that's the case even after a meeting that a board meeting that may be hard for some of us to accept. But in all honesty, when I'm voting for this, I'm going to put that third grader, that 10th grader, that graduate in my mind, and that's how I'm going to vote this evening.
Anyone else? I'm going to make some comments, but anyone else?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. I couldn't agree more either. I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Savage and his team for being bold enough to admit what our deficiencies are in this district, listen to our teachers, our staff, and our principals, make a plan and execute that plan. We need this. And as I said, just like Ms. Langford Fleming and others said, this is about our students first. And as I said, I have kids in this district, and when I think of that, I think of my kids and your kids. And when I make this decision, that's what I'm looking at.
Anyone else before we go to vote? Can you please restate the motion, Dr. Savage?
Yes, Chairman. Item J2, approval of the general personnel recommendations as presented.
Okay. This will be a roll call vote again. Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries eight zero. At this time, if you want to proceed, seven zero. Counted one extra. Sorry about that. Seven zero.
In that math score?
Yeah. Sorry about that. Motion carries seven zero. At this point, Dr. Savage, if you want to proceed with any personnel.
I would love to take this time to introduce some of our folks, and we have quite a crowd out there today, and it's such a privilege. So I'm just going to go slow and make sure I have the list because we do have a significant number of representation tonight. First, I'd like to recognize as an assistant principal joining Benita Springs High School, Natalie Woods. Natalie, please stand. I'd also like to take this time to recognize Kristen Alton over at Calusa Elementary, an assistant principal. I'd also like to take this time to recognize Daniel DeShazo at Calusa Middle, an assistant principal. Mary Sklenica at Gateway High, assistant principal. Ashley Putnam, Gulf Middle, assistant principal. Christina Thibodeau at Harnes Marsh Elementary, assistant principal. Chase Blitzer at Mariner High, assistant principal. Kimberly Karthy Pierre at Patriot Elementary, assistant principal. Brooke Isherwood at Success Academy, assistant principal. Inez Mata, talent acquisition coordinator, talent acquisition. Inez. Amber Kelty, Varsity Lakes Middle, assistant principal. Matthew Acosta, Budget Department, Assistant Director of Budget. Katherine Reiman Schneider, Tice Elementary, principal. Jared McKinney from Transportation Services to Executive Director of Transportation Services. Stacia Winfrey, The Alva School, principal. Dr. Nathan Shaker, Academic Services, Chief Academic Officer. Mr. Robert Dodig, Assistant School Board Attorney, Level Two. Christopher Drake, Challenger Middle, principal. David Sanon, Diplomat Elementary, principal. Danielle Jensen, Financial Accounting and Property Records, Director of Financial Services. Franklin Scott Cook, River Hall Elementary, principal. Cheryl Neely, Regional Associate Superintendent. Sharice Trent, Regional Associate Superintendent. If we could give all of our new administrators a round of applause, please. So just as a as a point of any time we're doing this, and obviously, it's a very large group today, is there anyone that was here today that we just missed and did not was not recognized that actually came and that just we have it incorrectly listed here? Anyone that was getting a change of assignment promotion tonight? Okay. So at this point, I just want to remind all of our administrators, some of you who are new in that role, who are brand new to being assistant principals, some of you who are simply changing the schools, some of you who are coming to the central office and supporting us. What this board has shown you tonight is a tremendous show of faith in your ability to lead in our district, to put others before yourself, to serve others. It is a tremendous mantle of responsibility as you have this new change in assignment and this new opportunity. All I ask of you is that you continue to honor that trust and understand that it is this entire governance team up here that we stand behind you. Everything that we do, all the decisions we make, while we don't always agree on all aspects, that is our job. Our job is to use our own thoughts, to to put them forward and to challenge each other and to try to come to the best outcome that we possibly can for our students. And you are the ones out there for those out in the schools and for the people here who are at central office. It's that work of supporting and enabling that support in the schools. It is because of you that we are doing what we're doing so you can help our students out there, so you can make the difference that all of us really want to see, so we can achieve the results we want. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you on behalf of this entire governance team for your your service in this district. We are so happy to have you. And just congratulations to you and your families, those folks who will be supporting you on the very many long days ahead. Much appreciation to each and every one of you. Okay? That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. I echo your words. And on behalf of this board, we thank you all. Please enjoy your tonight with your families. And if you want, as I said, please feel free to be excused now. I don't know if the board, we want to just take a quick recess for like three minutes. So we're in recess for a moment. Thank you, everyone. Okay, it looks like we're back on action meeting. We're zooming at 7:24 PM. At this point, we are going to move on to item Q, public hearing. So, Dr. Savage, please present your recommendations for this this evening's public hearing item.
Yes, Chairman. Item Q1, the approval to adopt revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt the best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be June 27, 2024.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Savage. At this point, we are going to recess the school board meeting and open the public hearing. The time is 7:24 27 24 PM. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is considered Dr. Savage's recommendation as previously stated. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for public comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the approval to adopt revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability? The effective date of this adoption shall be June 27, 2024. We're going to start first with public comment on the bylaws, Chapter 000, Policy 0125, Ethics and Education. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on said item? Okay, seeing none. Chapter 1000, Administration, which includes Policy 1210.01, Ethics and Education, Policy 1242, Professional Learning, Policy 1362, Anti-Harassment. Do we have anyone that wishes to publicly comment on this? Seeing none, moving on. Chapter 2000, Program, Policy 2210, Curriculum Development, Policy 2271, Articulation and Access to Florida College System Institution, Policy 2421, Career and Technical Education, Policy 202431, Interscholastic Athletics. Do we have any public comment on said items? Seeing none, moving on. Chapter 3000, Instructional Staff, Policy 3210.01, Ethics and Education, Policy 3242, Professional Learning, Policy 3362, Anti-Harassment. Do we have any speakers that wish to comment on said policies? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Chapter 4000, Support Staff, Policy 4210.01, Ethics and Chapter 4000, Support Staff, Policy 4210.01, Ethics and Education, Policy 4362, Anti-Harassment. Anyone wishing to make public comment on said policies? Seeing none. Chapter 5000, Students, Policy 5110.01, Promotion, Acceleration, Placement, and Retention, Policy 5463, Credits from Other Schools, Policy 5517.01, Bullying and Harassment. Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment on said policies? Seeing none. Chapter 8, Chapter 8000, Operations, Policy 8330, Student Records, Policy 8405, School Safety and Security, Policy 8510, Wellness. Anyone wishing to make public comment on said policies? Okay, seeing none. I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the school board meeting of June 26, 2024. The time is 7:27 PM. Dr. Savage, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Yes, Chairman. Item Q1, Approval to Adopt Revised Board Policies in Compliance with Changes in Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes to Adopt Best Practices and Promote Transparency and Accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be June 27, 2024.
You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to adopt revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of adoption shall be June 27, 2024. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons?
I'd make a motion to approve the superintendent's motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Any discussion? Ms. Langford-Fleming, do you have any comments on said policies?
I have none. Thank you for seconding.
Okay. At this point, we're going to move forward and proceed to our vote. I believe this will just be a digital vote? No, yes. So, okay. So, please record your vote. Ms. Langford-Fleming, were you able to vote? If not, how do you vote?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Okay. I'll get the math right this time. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, everyone. Just to double check, Dr. Savage or Attorney DeBree Bruno, is there anything you wish to address regarding the policies?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to go to the order, order other business. So, board member comments, we'll start with you, Ms. Juvenelli.
I'll be quick, because it's getting a little late, but I just want to congratulate all the promotions tonight, as well as the renewals, and just for staff to have a nice, safe summer, enjoy some of your time off that you have. For those of you that don't get to take the time off, you know, okay, we'll work hard, but I know you're going to take some time. Take some time for you. It's really important so you come back rejuvenated and ready to teach our students in August. And then, I just want to remind everybody to keep their eye on the prize, our students. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Ms. Patrica?
Just quickly, I wanted to ask the superintendent, and I think I know the answer, if I may, through the chair, where we stand in terms of hurricane readiness. As I look out and see Chief Newlin, I know you're on top of it, but I think, Dr. Savage, this might be your first go-around with a hurricane as superintendent?
Well, I'd have to think back now. Certainly, I'm tracking Gloucester. I don't think I had any hurricanes come through last time.
I don't think you did.
I've been through a number of them, unfortunately, but not at all.
Exactly. So, I'm just wondering, you know, where we stand in terms of readiness? Are we talking about all of that?
Yeah. So, not only are, I will have, with this board weekly, what I'll have is Mr. Newlin kind of give a brief. There's a reason why he's an award winner. So, I'll make sure that we put something in the, just to summarize, we've actually had some engagements with the county staff already, so I'd love to summarize some of that readiness work. They've already been meeting with our shelter principals. There's just a significant number of work that's already underway, but I'll have him put something in the board weekly, so you all can speak to it and have that information.
Perfect. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Jordan?
Okay, I thought Ms. Juvenelli would mention this. Mr. Persons, Ms. Juvenelli and I attended the Lee County Acceleration Graduation. It was their first graduation, approximately 20 students. So, that was really nice. It was held at Edison Park, so it was very quaint and just very nice. And then, I do want to remind people, because I know we talked about this earlier, about food. We do have the summer break spots, and where if you need food, please, you know, go on our website and look for those locations, and the food is there for you if you need food. So, please make sure that, you know, you look at that. And I just want to say congratulations to everybody that was appointed or reappointed today, and looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Persons?
Yes. Chair Fisher and myself attended the Academy of Teachers reception and dinner, and that's where all our former Golden Apple teachers and teachers of distinguished sort of meet for a week and go over everything, and then they induct this year's Golden Apple teachers into their academy. So, it really is a great time, and the teachers all learn so much from the present teachers and the past teachers. It's a great, great evening. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Ms. Langford-Fleming?
Sorry, but I do have to give some updates. First of all, congratulations to Kathy Dupre Bruno and Dave Newlin. I'm sorry I wasn't there to shake your hand this evening. And thank you to Mr. Krakow, who came and spoke. I love, love, love that you're taking the time out of your evening to share with the board your thoughts. Anyone who knows me and has heard me in the last few years knows how I feel about introducing technology in a safe way through the developmental years in elementary, middle school. It's all about balance, so thank you for showing up this evening. Just in word, you sound like a Golden Apple teacher in the making. Thank you for explaining what comes with new policies and what that entails for teachers, especially with the long list of things that are already on your board. So, my update, and I'm sorry I couldn't share this this afternoon due to our time constraints, but I do, I would be remiss if I did not give someone an incredible shout-out to the year served. So, I was able to attend the ISO committee as your liaison. We did have a quorum. Mr. Schimpf, man, are we going to miss your leadership. He's going to be stepping down in this role. I want to make sure that I publicly acknowledge his contribution to this community through this committee. Thank you. Also, I wanted to commend staff who gave updates on the district. Man, they were so well-prepared, even with questions, and I need to go ahead and apologize to Mr. Newlin, because I put him right on the spot in the middle of the meeting and asked him to update everyone on safety concerns where he could in a safe environment with what we can share, and he was spot-on, ready to answer those questions. But just for the board, for some things that were concerning from the committee, I'll start with some questions. Are we making sure, and Superintendent Dr. Savage, if you would like to speak on behalf of any of these questions, I guess now's the time, questions asked, are we making sure when we are constructing new schools that we're doing a deep dive into our traffic Another question asked, I guess the busing was, apparently, it was brought to our attention that more parents are driving students to schools rather than taking the bus, so they were asking, are we saving a significant amount of money in transportation costs with that? Another question asked, are we, and I'm sorry, I can't see what everyone's doing, so I hope I'm not rapidly firing questions off, are we asking and partnering with local businesses who do large amounts of travel, transportation within aid with preliminary phases of construction buildings? How are they transporting, such as businesses like Amazon, UPS, et cetera? And then, finally, regarding the Riverdale campus, there was a concern about a costly rebuild. Obviously, we all know, we've already discussed that at great length, but the main question was, are we building a school without adding extra seats? And please correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll pause here. I believe it was explained that the original build was to seat approximately 1,900 students. Since then, we've added portables, which is accommodating more seating than the original build. Therefore, while those are temporary seats, the new build will now be able to house those seats as well as those, the original seats plus the seats in portable. So, while that was temporary seating, we are in essence, I guess, adding new seats. Can you clarify? I just want to give you a moment, Dr. Savage, to be able to speak on that.
Yes, we'll definitely have a much more in-depth opportunity to talk about Riverdale and some of those aspects at the end of July, when we do our workshop together, and definitely, I hope that some of the ISO members will watch it, because unfortunately, there were some, you know, there were some wonderings that the group had that really were not accurate, and unfortunately, just because we had the different departments answering, they didn't necessarily know how to answer some of the questions, like planning, for example, was not there, and so they didn't have the ability to speak to some of those things, but your instinct was right on, and one of our other board members as well. So, when you are replacing those temporary seats with portables and getting permanent stations that are actually part of that core facility, that's absolutely, and again, not to conflate that with the idea of when you're building a new school, all the new seats are, all the, in a new school build, it did kind of originate as a maintenance project. That's really how Riverdale started, was as a, as a maintenance, there were, there were a number of major maintenance projects scheduled for the Riverdale campus. They, instead of doing them as one-off, separate things, like the complete replacement of the plumbing and elements like that, they did a master site plan instead, and as one feature of any others, they were able to then also replace permanent, I'm sorry, the temporary seats with permanent seats, among many other functions, and we'll get into much greater detail, but I just wanted to answer your question by also saying there were some misconceptions that were shared at that meeting that we'll certainly try to clear up in July. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And then, lastly, bear with me, there are, obviously, Mr. Schimpf is stepping down, but there were three members whose terms are up. They would love to be considered to continue to serve on this committee, so those board members that are looking for those replacements, please keep that in mind. There was also a question asked, out of the sitting board members that are there, plus the three that their terms are up, would they be willing to offer their support and help to anyone who would like to know what it entails to be a part of this committee, and they would all like to offer their services to be able to have those communications? That is all of my comments. I hope that was clear, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Langford-Fleming. Moving on to Ms. Morgan.
I have my motion to make, and then I also have some comments to make after my motion. I move the board direct Superintendent Savage to amend his organization chart, moving management and administrative responsibility for regional superintendents and academic services to Deputy Superintendent Cupid-McCoy.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Jordan. Public comment?
Discussion, and then you can have.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So, board members, comment, please proceed. If anyone has comments, questions, go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
On the job, on the job descriptions that were just approved, it does state that they do, their direct report is the deputy superintendent. It's on that.
Uh huh.
Yeah. We, I mean, we drafted them, and again, I, I'm sorry, I'm happy to answer the question. Our original concept was to have them report to the deputy superintendent, as I shared with you in the 1-1s and so forth. We, I, my effort is actually to allow our deputy superintendent to have a more global level of responsibility, and so we collectively, the chief of staff, the deputy superintendent, myself, the goal is for us collectively to have that piece, where we are kind of working through that together. It isn't, if she is continuing to be limited in scope of responsibility, that she is only responsible for the academic outcomes and so forth, then that is, in my mind, not truly honoring the global nature of the deputy superintendent responsibility, which is that she can work with any of the chiefs, that she can work with any of those aspects, as opposed to being looked at as simply another member of the chiefs. And that was the intentionality that I've shared on a number of occasions, and I've, I've been very visible about that attempt. It's not just about the person, it's also about the role. Not only do we have a person who's more than capable of doing more than simply just leading academics, we also have a person who is, who is able to add value in every other aspect of the organization, and I shared this with the board as well, that's part of why the organizational structure we had, but also I shared that as we see this, it's, it's also to create better accountability for the regional superintendents, that as long as you have that direct report and it's listed in the org chart in the traditional way that we've done it, that accountability is flowed directly to that person, and then that person becomes the person held responsible, which I understand why Dr. Bernier had that structure. He essentially was using that as a second, a supervising chief of academics, but that is not, that's why I very intentionally have placed it higher in the organizational chart, so it's the awareness that the responsibility that I'm asking of that role is more global than that. And so, while ultimately she will be helping initially, I mean, she's obviously here the first week, she'll be doing the lion's share, she's served in those capacities, she'll be helping us, it really will be all three of us, the chief of staff, myself, and Cupid, and Dr. Cupid-McCoy, that will all be working with any one of the members of the team, as well as any other chief on our team. I have no problem articulating that verbally, because they have all been told that, I've told the chiefs that, I've told our cabinet that, and I've told those individuals that. So, that's my response to that.
Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
I just want to say, it does, it says the regional associate superintendent will work directly with the deputy superintendent to improve teaching and learning, to close the achievement gap, and help each child achieve his or her highest personal potential. So, it is already in here, it just doesn't reflect that on the, the chart.
And I just don't want to mislead, that yes, while it's true, that is where they are on our chart, I, my expectation, and that's why it's visible, it's part of our public documentation, is that I'm elevating that role, that gee, I'm not, I'm not going to have a deputy superintendent down with the, with the other chiefs in that respect. It's a different role, different level of responsibility, beyond just that piece. And so, yes, the visualization that we had is done intentionally to be instructive to anyone who looks at it, what the level of responsibility we expect. So, I hope that answers the question. I understand what's on the job description, I understand that that is, that she'll be providing all that direction, but I'm just, it would be not transparent of me if I said that I'm going to maintain the existing structure of how it was, where those people continue to just be under that person, and that person is essentially a parallel to the chiefs. They are not. The deputy superintendent is elevated to that higher level. That's, that is how I'm utilizing the skills and the role. So, I hope that answers the question.
Real quick, I'm going to interject. I have a legal question for Attorney DeBree Bruno. What is our authority in regards to that motion?
So, this, this would appear to be something that falls within the responsibilities of the superintendent. Can the board bring forth a motion to direct the superintendent to take an action? Absolutely. Is it within the superintendent's purview to designate how he's going to utilize staff based on job description? Yes. He is responsible for personnel and directing the work of personnel via statutory language.
Thank you. I believe you had your hand up again, Ms. Morgan? Did you have your hand up, Ms. Morgan? Or did I miss somebody else?
No, I mean, I, I'm the one who brought the motion, so I'd like to talk to it.
Okay. Board members, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, listening to Dr. Savage is listening to somebody going around in circles. The job description says that the individuals will report to the deputy superintendent. Okay. The job chart, the organization chart does not reflect that. So, the question is, who is providing clarity with respect to what the role is? Who is providing PD with respect to the role? Who is providing expectations for these individuals? Who will be holding them accountable? Who will be evaluating them in their role? I just want to, well, and I'm just saying, and this is absolutely not a statement about the people in these positions. I am, I love the idea. I am so afraid that this structure is so fragile and so disorganized in terms of multiple people responsible, reporting across multiple lines. I see, as I started to say earlier this afternoon, in the first year under Dr. Cupid-McCoy, working with the vision that she and Dr. Spiro created, there was a very good a very good chance that by the end of the first year, there would be a solid foundation with very clear lines of authority, clarity about expectations, accountability, professional development. Without that, with three people providing supervision, providing direction, I'm going to go to Dr. Savage and ask him what he thinks I should do. I, no, you know what? I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to the pro. I'm going to talk to Dr. Cupid-McCoy, because it's her idea. She has a vision, she's worked in a system like this, she sees how it works. We are going to end up with three independent, four independent operators. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't believe in this, and I wanted this opportunity to say that I think this is a prescription for failure of a fabulous plan. No, you may not comment, because I still have comments to make. Obviously, my motion is moot. I get to talk every once in a while, you know, I do.
Let's maintain decorum up here, everyone.
Yeah, I'm trying. So, obviously, my motion is of no value, because you can do whatever you like, regardless of what staff does. So, I'll withdraw my motion. I will move on to Mr. Gomez, and I'll roll my eyes just like the superintendent. I'll move on to Mr. Gomez.
For mine, please maintain decorum up here.
So, I'm also very concerned about the movement of Gomez, because, as I said in my email, we have, we've waited a very long time to come up with someone who had the skillset experience, the interpersonal skills, everything to do the communications job. Now, the superintendent tells me that because we're a Republican board, because we have a Republican delegation, and because both have very close ties with the legislature, we really don't need a, a government relations individual. We can do with a coordinator. And then I look and I think, well, now, the other job that he has is responsibility for the strategic priority for strengthening student and family and community partnerships, working with families and community partners, using targeted communications going out, and strategic initiatives to bring people in. And Dr. Savage is suggesting that a legislative aide in a coordinator role can do those, can do those things. That may very well be. I don't share his competence. So, and I, you know, you've, you've seen all my comments in my various emails. I really, I mean, I could go on and on and on, as you know. I just worry that we have created a house of cards, and there are a lot of links, and a one link can take it down. Those are my comments. Thank you very much for indulging me.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Wow, okay. I was about to make my comments, but, and then we'll go to the-
Ms. Chairman, so I just want to make sure I reiterate what I stated in the briefing as we continue on with this conversation. When we have a reorganization, it's about positions and not about people. So, I want to be extremely careful that we do not open doors, so.
It's about how we fill positions.
Okay. I, I will cede to briefly, if you want, Ms. Jordan, before, if you want to make any other comments, you had, raised your hand, so I just want to make sure.
Well, first of all, this is the problem we have, I know one-on-ones are good, but on my one-on-one, that conversation never came out. That was not a conversation that I had with the superintendent. Because we are a nonpartisan school board, that's what we're supposed to be. So, regardless of what anyone is, that's how we should always be thinking of who we are, and we represent every single child and family in this community. So, regardless of, for that, for that position, and I know I was told that because we have a lobbyist, they give all the information, and I know that that is not correct, because our lobbyist works for many, many entities. So, that position is, because we're not talking about, we're not talking about positions, that position's job was to make sure to, to be in Tallahassee, to be there as our spokesperson, to hear what's going on there, to bring that information back to us on a daily, weekly, whatever that looks like, which absolutely was happening for the first time in many, many years. And I know that Dr. Savage said he's the one who created that position years ago, but even if he had, that position was a position that we had looked forward to having, to make sure that we had that connection. Regardless if we have members here who know people elsewhere, we all know somebody, but I, I just feel that, that's, that's, to me, is ridiculous, I'm just saying. And as a superintendent, he needs to be nonpartisan as well. And we need to make sure that we are moving forward for everybody.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make some of my comments, so. I was actually going to go into the technical college graduation that Ms. Juvenali and I attended, you know, maybe that'll be something, a, a little positive here. We did that a few weeks ago. Ms. Juvenali, I know we're talking about it pretty much every single person that crosses the stage, had a job. We even also had a marriage proposal. That was a, that was something new in front of it. So, congratulations to our technical college graduates. So, I, I just, you know, as I said, besides that, I mean, I appreciate our board discussion.
I forgot something. What am I going to do?
Oh, go ahead. Yes, sir, go ahead. So, I, you know, I was actually going to mention that three of our legislative appropriations were passed through the governor's office, so I do appreciate the governor and our state legislature, as well as the hard work of this board. I think a lot of it goes back to the, the credibility that we have built with the public here, as well as our government, and, you know, the, the things that we're, we're achieving in this district. So, I want to say thank you to this board, and thank you to our state government in regards to that. So, I also want to say we did have some tough topics tonight. I, I, I do appreciate the decorum this board has maintained. It's not easy discussion, so, and none of it up here is personal. I know that's, you know, been prior issues in the past, and I appreciate having been able to have these discussions. So, I want to say I appreciate all of you. So, at this point, I, I will let Mr. Persons go, and then we'll move on to Attorney DeBree Bruno, and then Dr. Savage.
Okay. I forgot about this. I've been telling everybody all week long. We had a Lehigh senior high school alumni make it to the Olympics. It's, and I hate saying the next part, especially if Jade is still on the line. Florida State's Jeremiah Davis won the men's long jump. That was coming. He jumped 8.20 meters, and it, he was in sixth place, and he had one more jump, and he went, he leaped, literally, all the way to first place. So, it was awesome. But what's even better than that is his dad was Jerry Davis from the class of 73 of the Green Wave, go Greenies. Okay. But other than that, I just forgot to say that, and I just wanted to give a congratulations, that we have an Olympian former student that's now going to be an Olympian.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. We always appreciate your story. So, moving on to Attorney DeBree Bruno, I know we have a little bit of business with her.
We, we actually do. There's one thing that we did not address at the briefing, and I want to make sure that we address it this evening, Board, is the Florida School Board also requires a member, as well as an alternate, to serve on the advocacy committee. So, I went back and looked at the committee list. We had a board member, or have a board member that is serving for the 23, 24 school year. Ms. Jordan and Ms. Langford-Fleming is the assistant, but I need somebody for the 24, 25 school year, and they've requested the name by July 1st.
Okay, board, go ahead, Ms. Petrika.
Again, in the interest of spreading the wealth, so to speak, across the board, I'd like to elevate Ms., Mrs. Langford-Fleming.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations or further roles?
If she does not want to do it, I will continue.
Okay. Any other nominations, suggestions, people that want to do it? Ms. Langford-Fleming, is that a role you're interested in?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Petrika.
Do we just need a consensus on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Are we, would the board, in their pleasure, be willing to move forward with Ms. Langford-Fleming as the primary for the legislative, it's advocacy for FSBA, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, seeing no objection. Ms. Jordan, would you like to serve then as the alternate?
Sure.
Okay, do we have any objection to that? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Okay, thank you to both for your service. I appreciate that. And thank you, Ms. Jordan, for your service in this past year on FSBA. We appreciate it. Back to you, Attorney DeBree Bruno.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and I have no further comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Savage.
Yes, absolutely, Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. I want to give a big shout out to Mr. Larry Stevens, our Chief Operations Officer, who has answered a number of questions while I've been sitting here, just on a number of things. But he also, just based on the briefing discussion earlier that the board members had related to the specific East Zone high school projects and some of those costs and so forth, he produced a memoranda that is ready and signed, and that I will scan after the meeting. We'll make sure you get that out tomorrow. So, it just kind of outlined some of the costs and time parameters, the things that we were talking about, just more information. And then we'll have a little bit more in-depth opportunity for the board members to not only review this, but then we'll have some more follow-up conversation in our next one-to-ones as well, as we contemplate any potential issues related to this. I'll be digging in from an operational standpoint, but I just really, great appreciation to Mr. Stevens and just the prompt work. It's pretty comprehensive here. I'll make sure you all have that, just answer some of the questions you had about the N and N site and their considerations as well. The other thing I just want to do, you know, just is to take a moment to, you know, and again, it's about accountability and so forth, is just to, to offer an apology. You know, I think one of the things that's really important is that you kind of self-monitor as you're going through, you know, obviously, it's very contentious, some of the conversation today. I just want to offer an apology to Ms. Morgan. You know, while you were giving your comments, you know, I, I may have made a face that, you know, looked like rolling of eyes, and I think just to be quite honest, it's, it's just improper. And, and I just want to apologize for that, because quite frankly, we can agree to disagree. You know, I, I can think that it's micromanagement, that it's telling me how to direct my staff and work with them. But the end of the day, you know, I want you to give voice to the things that you have concern. It makes us all better when you do that. And the last thing I want to do, you know, your, your long service on this board and experiences aboard, I just always do appreciate that, even if I don't like it, and even if I don't, you know, maybe appreciate that it comes, it may come across, it might feel on my end that it's crossing that center line, that it's trying to tell me how to do my job, that it's saying that only if the Deputy Superintendent says that it's good enough, that you'll support it. But the reality is, I, I take it in the spirit that I think it's meant, which is, we all need to be the best we can possibly be, and, and it doesn't help if I'm reacting to those things in a way that is unprofessional and improper. And so, I just want to offer from the bottom of my heart, I apologize that I was reacting to the comments just improper, and I'd rather just own that and say that to you. And just really give kudos and appreciation to all the board members for some very, you know, difficult territory that we had today, to cover these pieces. But I really applaud the board for committing to put our students first, to really taking a good, hard look at the data. All seven of you, as you mentioned earlier, really gave us the confidence to pursue this work. And while I know it's being pitched, I'm the messenger, I'm the one saying it, I really want to also give credit back to Dr. Cupid-McCoy, Dr. Spiro, and really, all the people that, some of them who are exiting roles and moving into new roles. This is, this is like the giant relay race. We all do the part that we do, and we work the very best we can, and then we hand a baton to the next people. And sometimes those folks do it slightly different than we did it, and they bring different talents, but different challenges. And so, this work is like the ultimate team sport, and I just want to acknowledge the contributions of the folks who are leaving the central office and going to other roles, or folks who are changing their assignments, that that is valued and appreciated. We're excited about what's coming. But I just really want to give a moment to highlight this board, this governance team, for, for really saying, you know, we're going to have that spirited conversation, but ultimately, all seven of you truly did want to do something to better support our students, and that was evident. I have, again, you know, it's unfortunate that, obviously, these are very challenging things to unveil. You know, ideally, we'd love to do all of it in the public sphere, something that I think is just worth mentioning. The second you mention organizational change of any kind, and structuring, and have positions, the people on the other side of that camera, they start to immediately fill in the gaps. And so, the, the reason why these things were done behind closed doors to try to, after getting the board's really energetic, energetic yes around transformation work, was that because of the impact it has on the people potentially, that's why it was a small group that I was working with to do this work, not because we wanted to be exclusive, but because the unintended consequences of elevating it to public discourse at this level in an organization of this size starts to create tremendous fear among people who think, is this going to impact me? How, they're talking about regionals, does that mean I won't have a job? All those things at a time of reappointment, it's not done to be secretive. It truly is done to be transformative and put our students first. And I just want to make sure that's very clear to everyone, that that was why we engaged in it, but it was not me alone. I, I had tremendous contributions from others, and then we involved others. And then again, as I mentioned, we actually utilized principal suggestions based on additional conversations to infuse that into this work as well. So, just a credit to all of you today. Thank you for putting our students first. I hope, I know it's going to be a while, we're going to have a while for our next meeting. So, I just hope everyone also on this team, this governance team, including our honored board attorney as well, that you all have just a wonderful break for a little while, and that if there's anything I can do in the meantime, even though I will be on vacation, feel free to reach out to me. I will be still available by phone, and if you need something, I'll be happy to do it. Otherwise, Dr. Cupid-McCoy will be here next week while I'm on vacation. And then, we look forward to getting back to work again back in July. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. At this point, okay, Ms. Jordan.
May I just have one point of clarification? I don't know if it's by the superintendent or the board attorney. Our job descriptions that we approve, are they just a guideline, or are they approved to be what we just approved them to be?
Yeah, I'm so, I'm sorry, I was not clear on this.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we were having the discussion, but I wasn't clear on this to you all. That's what I was, the reason why I was giving the additional clarification is, it is absolutely true that on the job description, the letter of who's being reported to whom and so forth, that yes, it designates the Deputy Superintendent or designated administrator. And the or designated administrator, in this case, is the superintendent. That is, and I, and I did not want to have that not be transparent. That's why I wanted to make sure I was explaining the why, that while it's true, and, and any future superintendent who inherits this opportunity may choose to say, yes, I want them back with the Deputy Superintendent, or I want them to report to Chief Academic Officer, or whatever they want to do. And that is their purview to do it, because that is, that is an operational consideration. But absolutely, in the job description you're approving, it does say exactly what you approved. And that is within your purview to do so. I'm just highlighting that that latitude is there, and I didn't want to pretend that that's what we were going to do. It would not be honest. I'd rather be honest and say the goal was to allow for that, and, because I did tell you all that privately, and I wanted to also make sure that was shared publicly. I said it in the briefing today. I just wanted to reiterate it again when asked the direct questions. I hope that provides the additional clarification. Ms. Jordan.
Good. Okay. Next schedule means the board on Tuesday, July 30th, there'll be a school board workshop at 12:00 p.m., a briefing at 2:30 p.m., a special board meeting to adopt the fiscal year 2024, 2025 final budget at 5:05 p.m., followed by a school board action meeting at 6:00 o'clock. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seen no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:05 p.m. Have a good evening and a great July 4th, everyone. Thank you. and a great July 4th, everyone. Thank you.